We're trying our best.
Oh, I thought I thought you that's what you were voting on last week.
It was the final interview since like all day on campus and then take them to dinner. But now we're just doing the reference checks and probably gonna offer this week.
Oh, I see.
But uh it has to be the right fit for them. Yeah, it's a lot of negotiating, like not just for the what they're gonna make, but like the extra money the school will get from the university if we get a building, things like that. So it's complicated.
Rick, I brought that stuff back to the school when you you weren't in on Friday, I guess, the you know, the paid bills, so.
Yeah, Lori told me and then you picked up the new batch?
Yes, yes, yes.
Not as much.
No, it's that's good. That's that's better problem. Well, the other one back to February, I think, you know, it was.
Yeah.
Thank you for answering those questions. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that, you know, until you get into the rhythm of the thing.
Yeah, you'll see. It's a lot of redundancy.
Yes, yes. Hey, Dr. Joe.
Good job.
Hey, Dr. Bosick. Rob, how you doing?
Good. How's it going?
Good. How's work going?
It's wild.
Work and finishing your dissertation. I'm sure you're uh.
I know.
You probably taking a lot of medication right now.
Yeah, well, there's all the caffeine, all the just.
Surviving. No doubt. It will all be worth it. That's for sure.
Yeah.
I told you, my buddy says it's professional hazing. He calls it professional haze.
Gotta make it through.
Yep.
I don't know if anybody else is joining us or not.
Give it a couple of minutes. I wanna move outside. It's too nice out.
Yeah.
I mean, it might just be us. I don't know if everybody probably didn't want five hours of meetings.
Yeah, that's that's exactly. I didn't see anybody really accept it either, I don't think. Um, I thought I saw maybe Eric accept, but I'm not sure. We can start and then. Or you're on a wait.
I can just wait a minute. I just want like, I don't know, I wanna talk about some big like. I don't know, I haven't been following along as close as I should have the last couple of weeks, just with everything. So I wanna get up to speed on the big dollar items.
Okay.
Um, especially the construction. I know Ed, he just, I just forwarded an email to everybody else from Ed with the attachments that we're gonna look at later. It looks like it's what hundred and for Bill Cray, it's one hundred and sixty seven thousand plus six percent of total construction, if I'm reading this right. So let's six percent of like twelve million.
It's about seven hundred and twenty thousand.
So seven twenty plus one sixty seven?
Yes. So you're looking at almost a million dollars.
Man. That's that's kind of one reason we're high. All right, I mean, we can get started now that Ed's here. We can talk more about that. Who's the best person to bring us up to speed on that? Have there been meetings with Bill?
Yeah, we've met with Bill a few times between Rick, Ed, me, a couple of times where originally and Matt was involved. Originally, um, he said he didn't want anything to do with CM, but I think now he's interested in CM as well.
You think because of the money?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if he saw the project and thought maybe he could be more involved. I don't know. What are your thoughts, Rick or Ed on that?
I have no idea if he's motivated by the extra money. He uh I do know that when I ran into Ed, our Ed, uh, Russnack, I don't know, last week or the week before, he said he thought it was essential that we have a uh, that we could have the owner's rep um also, but he he said a construction manager was absolutely essential. So that kind of contradicted what Bill told us. He thought originally, and I think once Bill looked at the project, he also thought this needs a CM. It needs somebody who's there every day. I think his I think his proposal was high because he cannot personally in person be this construction manager. So he's got to hire people to do that and they will report to him. Pretty sure that's how it works, but it's in his proposal.
Okay, let me read them over.
I had a question about that. Um. When we were in at seven eighteen Waller, um, I'm sure there were many of them, but the one I was at. Ed, the other Ed indicated, or maybe it was kind of suggested that maybe our own staff would be sort of the day to day construction manager. Is that not within their scope of capabilities? Um, or maybe I'm defining construction manager of it differently than than what they are. But as far as the day to day person that goes and checks up on the site, do we need that?
I've seen it done in both in construction managers and then I've seen your facilities director manage that as well in the in in a couple of different construction projects. So I guess it depends on the capabilities of the facilities director.
Yeah, my understanding was that we were gonna sort of hire this specialist to have, let's say, the the big picture thinking, the specialized thinking, and maybe to direct the the guys we have uh who might do the day to day checking. Um, so I maybe didn't recognize could not perform a day to day checking in that instance.
I had a conversation with Ed. I don't know him very well, but at all, but um he said in his previous jobs, he had handled construction. I think it was a corrections facility and a lot of other stuff, you know, that he seemed to know a lot about building, but whether that qualifies for doing this, you know, for for a school renovation, I don't know.
Well, I think we'll have a clearly defined scope of work, right? And like timeline. So even like if our facilities manager, I mean, they are, they know what they're doing and they're competent and they can they know what looks good and what doesn't and what's right and what's wrong. I'm I don't know. I'm having some sticker shock with this. Honestly.
Yeah, the uh the six percent I sent an email earlier today, the six percent is almost double what most construction management companies charge. It's usually around three percent.
Got it.
Well, maybe it's higher because the project isn't the total dollar amount of the project isn't as high as some other projects, but I've never seen six percent plus, you know, almost seventeen thousand a month upfront for reconstruction.
And I don't know, part of like Penn Hill's memory is like tainting me a little bit, knowing that like this is what happened there.
Yes.
Like it's just spiraled out of control. And it's don't don't want that to happen here. And it's like a smaller scale project.
Right. Right.
Well, part of the reason why we hire an owner's rep or a construction manager is so that way the the cost of the project itself don't don't spiral out of control because they would provisionally keep tabs on that, or they would negotiate better deals in our favor. Um, you know, make sure that we're not getting ripped off or double charged, et cetera. But change orders go through successfully. So so the logic behind hiring him in the first place was to be more defensive with our budget. But obviously, I guess if he's a full service and subcontracting, et cetera, then we're almost paying for like a whole other. I forget what the architecture company is, but they had already like almost a million dollars of soft costs. So um and there was no cap on the on the new proposal, whereas the old proposal was like it maxes out at around two hundred. This one is like the sky's the limit, it seems like.
Yeah, I like the old one.
All that said and done, would it be appropriate for us to to ask him if there's like a health uh happy medium, maybe where it's still a bit larger than the original scope, but that he has a checklist of things, maybe we meet weekly or biweekly, and he gives like a checklist to our people on the ground of like what they need to look out for, because things go pretty slowly in the construction timeframe. So even paying him like seventeen K a month upfront. I mean, like, things are out to bid, it'll take a few weeks. Like, we're just paying him seventeen K for kind of dead time, which is, I was happy with that, like ceiling because of the fact that.
Right. Alright. Well, um, one of the things that we talked about, I think it was on the original meeting that Dr. Joe, and this was about about three weeks ago, I think Ed was on, Dr. Joe, myself and Matt. Somebody on that meeting, and I thought it was Bill, said that it might be a little premature to have him start right now. Because of there's no design development yet. So really, he's not really looking at anything. Um, the board hasn't authorized the architects to move into the design development phase. Am I right? Do I am I saying that right, Doc?
I remember us discussing it something to that fact. Yeah, I'm trying to remember all the details of it.
When was this call?
What's that?
When was this call?
Um, I wanna say, I don't know. Probably three weeks ago, four weeks ago, when we went when when right after the, I guess it was right after the board approved the first proposal of two hundred and eighty thousand, and then Matt, remember Matt drafted up another. So so prompt by by Matt drafting up that agreement, it prompted that call because Bill thought that the the way the agreement was written was way too much for what he wanted to do at the time.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So so it was back around the end of April. So you're right. I mean, if we if we're not even at design development, we're gonna start the clock's gonna start ticking on that sixteen thousand a month or whatever, and there's nothing for him to look at.
Yeah, I mean, how do we? I just wanna make sure we use tonight's time wisely with Bill and as a group, because we'll have a chance to ask questions, right? And just talk back and forth about his proposal, but like how detailed do we get? Obviously, I'm not used to doing this in a public forum.
Seems like it would have made sense to maybe talk this out with him um to almost compare, like I I'm pretty sure I responded to the email with like, what's the what are we getting extra for the like unknown extra amount of money? Um, like that that was never answered. So to me, I I mean, I could put him on the spot tonight and say, what are we getting extra? But that that seems like a bit catalog-y, so.
Yeah.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I asked him to address. Um, the difference the difference between the original proposal and the new one that includes construction management uh support. So that's um, that's that's what I expect him to be able to talk about.
Ed, did you did you get a sense of whether he might like um he might have something pre-prepared? Like, I guess, going back to to Rob's question, is this something that you feel he can kind of answer that question? And we can deliberate in a timely manner, or or is it your sense that we maybe hear from him and have a follow up later?
Um, I can't, I can't answer that. I think it depends on how detailed we wanna get. I just wanted to get him in front of the board as soon as possible, in case we wanted to vote on something next week, so that we're not holding things up. Uh, hold the project up for want of either an owner's rep or a construction manager.
Okay.
Uh, so if we can't accomplish that tonight in a reasonable amount of time, uh then we'll have to go ahead and set up another meeting uh to just to get all of those questions answered.
Now, the fact that we already approved his past contract, is he able to kind of act with that approved contract and then, you know, kind of we rewrite it like so that way the money that we've already put towards him for the first month would roll into the new one?
I don't know. We can ask him.
That'd be a Matt question, yeah.
Okay, and generally, before things go to vote, how much lead time do we need for it to get on the agenda to vote? Is it twenty four hours?
So with the new state policies or procedures, I have to have something on the agenda. So if our board meeting is next Tuesday at seven, I have to have the agenda posted and can't be changed twenty four hours in advance.
Okay.
Now, there are some exceptions. I don't know if this was was qualified for one. Matt would be the better one to answer that, but um, I have to post it twenty four hours in advance and it can't make changes until, you know, something drastic.
So if we wanna get something done with Bill, we have a week.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Uh, are there any other big dollar conversations we need to have?
Um, so. Let me see. So going back to the maintenance shed and the um the uh pole building, so to speak. So we had talked about this, I think, last month at a finance meeting that you know, I just at that night, I just briefly talked to Dr. Joe about a plan to put in place to maybe try to come up with another solution instead of putting out five hundred thousand dollars for this installation of this pole building, maybe taking a look at how we can restructure our staff and possibly go out and purchase a smaller building that we could house uh stuff in. And um part of the reason is, is you know, was we've been talking about is we wanna get rid of the trailers. So part of getting rid of the trailers means we gotta find stuff not only to store what's in those trailers, but also what's at the high school and various locations because we lost everything, but then also we need a place to house the workers, because they they kind of report in a park and a that that you know, they centralize at Kelly Elementary School and that at those trailers. So one of the things that Ed Rosiak and myself came up with, and then we talked to Dr. Joe about it, was to possibly station a maintenance personnel man, we have three of them, we station a maintenance person at each building, and that would be their home. So one at Kelly, one at Turner, and then we would have one that would work at district admin and the high school, that would be their facility. But that because they're so small that that person would then be the 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 go to person to help if something big came out of one of the buildings. You know, when they all needed to go out and maybe, you know, uh, when it becomes grass cutting time, you know, they you know, this guy goes and he helps cut the grass at one building, then the next day he goes to the other building and then he does our bill, because our building is, you know, one guy can do that probably in an hour to cut our grass, and there's no grass stuff. So those are just examples. So we have talked about having everybody kind of just have their own building. They would have a truck at that building. And if things needed to be done or bought or purchased that building, they would take their vehicle, the truck, go get the stuff, come back. Instead of running trucks all over Wilkinsburg and Monroeville to Home Depots and to Lowe's and the East Liberty. You know, everybody would just be stationed and then, you know, guys would just work out of that building and when things needed done, uh, no different than the principals going to a custodian, they would go to the maintenance guy and say, things needed done. Uh, whether it's a water break or electrical or whatever the need may be, or or a lot of times they're already in those buildings because they fill in for the custodians when they call off. So when custodians call off, their first line of sub is the maintenance guy. So that is kind of our plan. So that kind of leads into now we don't need that big building, not only to house people and the equipment, we just need to house the equipment. And now we're not calling it and 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 now we're not housing people there, so it can definitely be called a shed, or we're not getting into the predicament with the borough. So one of the things that we've been looking at is a thirty by thirty shed. Um, which is nine hundred square feet, which is a hundred square feet, I believe, under the ordinance from the borough where we would have to have all that other stuff. All that other stuff done. So I know Ed was finding some companies, Dr. Joe went on, he found a company, he presented to Ed, they'll kind of look into to get pricing. Um, and here's here's a picture of one of the buildings that we were looking at that we would be able to put on our site. Um, with the total cost of fifteen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars for this building. And then this is everything that comes with it, along with the 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 plans to install it. It comes installed for that price as well. So this is something that we were talking about doing and thinking if the board would be okay with this, this would help start the process in emptying those trailers, getting rid of the trailers and having a place to store things.
Does it come with walls? Because apparently the last one didn't.
Yeah, no, it does. Um, and again, I think what we would do in this case, so we don't get burned again. Um, and and Ed's pretty diligent with with doing things and talking to people, is we would have Matt take a look at all all the stuff and and the specs and everything and uh go from there before we actually pulled the trigger and ordered it.
Yeah, what these are is um the place that I sent him, and I I appreciate that Ed went out and looked at other places. The place I sent him was this uh uh in in Bedford, um, it's like a Bedford structure, Shawnee structures, that's what it's called. They're already pre-made. They're already there. You can Google their their website. I've stopped there many times. You get them, people get them for their houses, and I'm like, you know, this is really all we need. And and then Ed found something that had a another place had a better price. They're already prefabbed. They're ready to go um now down the road if we want um to insulate it, things like that. We still gonna, you know, there's still gonna be, you know, electrical things like that, but it's very minimum cost involved, but like if we want to insulate it down the road and figure out how, you know, if we wanted to heat it and things like that. But these are pole buildings that are already built and we're staying under, I believe, the thousand square foot guideline from the borough where they start implementing all those regulations that they want us to abide by. So it's under that thousand square feet. Um, so and we have to move. The reason why we need to get this done is because for us to be able to move the stuff out of the trailers and then to get the trailers moved. So if we if that's our goal this summer, this has to happen first.
Right. Right. And, you know, I would like to, you know, at least start with one this year and see how it goes and see what all we can get in. And again, it's nine hundred square feet building. Um, so it's gonna hold a lot, and you can see there's three roll up doors where we can get trucks in or equipment in or lawnmowers and things like that. So again, we would house everything here, and this is where we would house our trucks. Then the guys would meet here in the morning, get their equipment, get their truck and go to their prospective buildings. And then they would just stay at that building all day long instead of, you know, driving back and forth to different places. So this kind of would be, and I think Doc wants the movies up to the to the tennis court areas.
I said two questions. Is a tennis court area, well, three, is the tennis court area at Turner?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Behind it.
Has anyone viewed one of these in person, just to make sure it's not gonna be um like janky or kind of uh be an eyesore? Like the trailers have come to be over time.
Now, they're not an eyesore. If now I, this particular place that he found is, like I said, it's less expensive than the Shawnee structures. I've I've seen, I've stopped by the Shawnee structures, my family has bought from there before. They're not. They're very nice. People put them on their property. Um, and they, like I said, they usually come in two pieces. They haul them in and put them together. Um, no, they're very nice, actually. And up there is a nice location. It's out of sight too, but it they're 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 built. It's like garages, nice garages for people's homes.
Did they? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna suggest if um maybe if you present two options to us and also um like a map of of where it's gonna go, just so we have an idea of visibility. Um, because if it's just like an extra two K more or something to have, and this looks, okay, it looks like a garage, but if 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 the Shawnee structures are truly like, I don't know, would nicely cohere with the existing building, then maybe we would do something to to not be that.
Yeah, just just keep in mind, Vanessa, it's up in the woods almost. Yeah, it's it's like you don't see Turner School from this building where we, Dr. Joe wants to put it.
Are these built on a slab then that's put down first?
Well, we would, that that's what we need to talk to them about is you can do either a concrete pad or a gravel pad. So we wanna see what we just. I'm suggesting a concrete pad. Um, I think that would be best for us, but uh yeah, yeah.
No, the other building though, didn't they say you had to put it up on not only on a on slab, but on cement blocks too?
Well, it had to have a foundation and everything.
Right, right.
And I, Rick, I'm I'm not sure if all that's in there, but I think maybe for next week for the board, we could get them the, because I don't know if just the cost of this is in there, but we could get them an estimate on you know, a concrete pad, so they have that. And if there's any other possible estimates in there, that's kind of how I explained it, you know, Ted. So
Yeah.
if he can get all that, that way the board has a good overview of the overall costs. You know, a concrete pad might cost us fifteen thousand dollars, um, you know, or twenty thousand. So that way you guys have a clear number in front of you.
It also says site preparation. Um, on this particular quote, it says there's no site preparation or concrete work and that they can install on the pad. So I guess that would be good for for Ed to confirm that they don't need any kind of, I guess, special I forget what what Denny said, or or the concrete foundation or blocks or.
Well, they need some, they'd need a substrate underneath the uh underneath the concrete, I would guess.
And I haven't been up there in a while. I wouldn't mind actually walking it again, so because at one point, those were tennis courts. Concrete, um, tennis courts, probably, I'm guessing, concrete. So I'm kind of anxious to see what it looks like up there, you know.
Yeah.
I've never been up there.
The shed that we have now down by Turner, I believe, was up there at one point, or am I right?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we had a shed up on that property already at one time. So. Yeah, we'll get more.
There's no subsidence or anything, because putting like a tennis court versus a a building with vehicles may change the.
Yeah.
It's a good, it's.
Everything is subsidence here. I watched the whole houses fall off cliffs to Rick Parker, Highland Park, so, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so we'll have him be able to, that's a que, that's a good question to ask. I mean.
You guys keep saying up there, and I'm just always wary of up there anywhere.
The lot itself is probably at least a half acre. So if not bigger. Okay. Alright, so we just.
Appreciate your creativity, though. This is, this is.
Yeah, it's just trying to think outside the box and save some money and, you know, for fifteen thousand and plus some concrete work, let's see what we can do. And then, you know, starting in July, we can station those guys, you know, at a building.
Yes, it's great. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, um. Just, Rob and I, when we talked about putting together the agenda, just some items that we thought maybe might need addressed, he asked me to kind of put a list together, and we already talked about two of them, and one being the shed and one being the construction manager. I'm pulling up a document now just to see. Bear with me, I gotta switch screens. Yeah, so one of the things that, and I think I just talked about it, is we need some direction with the architects. I I know Matt said, I talked to Matt today on another issue with the architects, but uh he said that when he walked into the meeting we were having with them last month, I think it was prior to the planning meeting. You know, there was some talk about we have to have board approval for them to take it to the next level. So I just, you know, I'm waiting for some direction from the board or from, you know, somebody to tell us that we're moving forward with uh design and development, so they can start designing the building uh at this point. But I know that a lot of that hinges on the owner's rep versus a CM down here on D. So I just wanna bring that up and see if there's any discussion about that or if anybody.
That dovetails precisely with making up our minds about an owner's rep or a construction manager or a combination of the two, because there's gotta be a meeting of the minds of the architects and that person who we hire uh before, especially if it's Bill Cray, because Bill raised the point that he thinks that a lot of those drawings uh exist already, and it doesn't have to be done over again. Now, the architect said that's not the case. So we've got to, they've got to get together and come up with, what's the answer to this?
Well, I agree. Um, I think that what Bill's talking about is the surveys. Well, I agree. I think that what Bill's talking about is the surveys.
He talked about whole plans and everything.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't, okay. That, yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. I just want to get some direction because again, the clock's ticking on the two-year window that we have for the nine million if we're going to use it.
Yeah, we almost need like I want to like the sequence of events of everything we need to honestly just go through with the whole board. It's, it's so complicated. And I don't know, I think it's going to be hard for some, some people to vote that haven't been as involved or just like to get them up to speed and like how we get them up to speed to vote on such a big project. That's what I don't know how to do.
If we can't make a decision by next week, I really wonder if we can't run with the last contract that we approved at least for a month. I mean, it's, it's often the case and things I've done where we like, we go with that contract until it gets upgraded to a better contract. So that would at least enable us to get Bill in a room with the architects and start moving on that. And if we decide to upgrade his contract, I'm sure he won't say no.
And we can bring our own facilities guys too, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, we can see how that goes, right? Give that a couple of months, bring our own guys. We can have a representation from the board. And if we need to get more expertise, then we get more expertise. I don't know. It's a tough one.
We probably have to check with Matt, but I, I mean, Ed, how does that sound to you? Does that sound like something that we could use as a stopgap or hoping that we reach a resolution, but if we don't, that we don't hold it up anymore?
I don't know. I felt good about the idea of having the owner's rep and now that seems to have changed that we need a construction manager in place at the time that the architects start doing their work. I don't like paying the seventeen thousand dollars a month for that pre-construction support, but I think that one of the reasons that Turner turned into a a cluster is that we, is that we didn't have that in place. And, and Turner was a mess. We thought that everything was sailing along really smoothly until we found out that it wasn't. We found out that Joe had to go there, stop there every day after school to supervise what was going on because nobody was doing that. So I think that for us to have a professional representative, you know, representing the district with the architects at this early phase is really important. Now, could we proceed under the contract that Matt already cleared? I don't know. We can ask him tonight. Say that, you know, there hasn't really been time to analyze his other proposal. We'd like for him to tell us tonight briefly what's, what are the differences, what are the extra features of the new proposal and then ask if we can just work under the old one for a while.
But everybody will be assembled, you're saying, at seven. So let's maybe just ask as many questions then as we can and then table this discussion until we hear from him.
Yeah, or I, I don't know, depending on how it's going, I'll just ask him if we can get started under the old contract while we deliver. That way, I mean, the sooner we can have him sit down with the architects, the better, I think. Rick, Joe, you've been involved in construction projects like this. I think they have to get at a table really soon and resolve things like does the survey, does the old survey apply here or do we need to do the new one? Or do any, or any of the drawings usable? Or do we have to have them all done over again? Architects don't like to hear that we don't need all new drawings. Well,
well, the thing of it, the thing of it is that we don't have drawings for that building because they're, the architects that were here that did those drawings, they are their, their documents. They are the property of those architects. They're not going to give them. So the drawings will have to be done.
We signed a contract that, that doesn't give us ownership of our own drawings?
So the, the drawings that were done by, what was the name of that firm? I can't even think of the name of the firm. Core Architects. They will not share those drawings with another proprietor. They won't share them with another architectural firm.
But Bill Cray has them. Bill Cray, whatever Bill Cray has, he got them from, from a contractor, a general contractor who was going to bid on our project, on the Turner project. We sent out plans and RFPs for both schools. So this, this, this contractor that Bill Cray knows had everything kept them. All of the plans for Kelly is what he said to me.
Right. The ones from two thousand sixteen. You're right.
Yeah. Yeah. The weekend, we can clarify that with him tonight, but I, I thought that was great news.
Yeah, that's a good question for him tonight to, to ask to see what exactly he has.
I thought Bill was talking about like the as-built drawings.
That's what I thought too. That's why it's, it's a good question.
Because those we should own. Like if, if we pay someone to come in and measure our space, it should be ours.
Oh, yeah. The as, yeah, you're right, Vanessa. The as-built we have. I'm not saying that. You're right. I'm saying the, the ones for Kelly that were never solidified and the ones that went out to bid, but never, we, the board refused the project back in fifteen, sixteen.
Okay, I'll go back and try to read the emails before we meet, but my understanding was that we didn't need surveys and other technical details to assess the existing situation because those previous architects already determined what was the existing situation. And that's what Bill was saying. We should not duplicate. Not that those architects should give us their vision of the future because obviously we've already invested in this other architecture firm to envision the future in a different way. Okay, I'll look at that.
All right. So then kind of just piggybacking off of some direction, what are we doing about the admin building, you know? We need a roof. There's water leaking in the roofs in Dr. Joe's office and the conference rooms and the hallways. I mean, we kind of put everything on hold, whether we're going to sell it or renovate or build new in one of the buildings. So that's, that's something that we need to get some direction on as well, along with the architects.
We approved, I thought we approved money for roof, the roof on that along with, you know, the height, I mean, Turner was done first.
You're right. But I talked to Matt about that. You're right, Dennis. And I talked to Matt about that. And because the bids were back two thousand twenty and twenty-one when during COVID, they're expired. So we have to go out to bid again.
Okay. Well, you should, you should stabilize a piece of real estate with a roof. Regardless of whether we sell it or we keep it, we don't want the building to deteriorate because then we can't sell it or we can't keep it. So my personal opinion on that is that we absolutely should put a roof and that's not contingent upon any, anything that we would do with the building.
Well, yeah, I agree. It's just, it's, it's a ninety thousand dollar investment.
But that's, that's essential. Like so many of the buildings here in Wilkinsburg, even if they're completely rotted out, like we pay to put roofs on them just to stop them from deteriorating more. Like the Hunter building just got a roof to just protect whatever's left in there. So.
Yeah, I could start that process this week. And I just wanted to see if touch base on the WCDC with the high school, if there's anything we need to be doing with that. I know Ed, you said you thought there was a contract, but Matt clarified that.
Yeah, right. I have not heard back from them that they need anything else.
Okay.
In addition to that, there, there was nothing to sign.
Yeah.
The ball's in their court. We're waiting for them.
I think the ball's in their court. Yeah.
Okay.
We reached back out to Tracy because we don't want the ball to be in their court too long.
You know, but I have a concern about that as well because I believe they said it was going to be two years minimum that it was going to take to sell that building. It wasn't going to be immediate. So the roof is leaking. When we were there, plaster was falling on the top floors and then they're paying, I think the half a million dollars from the water main or the fire suppression system that broke. That's going to just fix that, right? It has nothing to do with the roof and the boilers are bad. So I mean, that, we've got, you know, even if we're going to be having to sell the building to hang on to it for another couple of years, we're going to have to make decisions whether we're going to temporarily patch that roof. And if anything can be done with the boilers, but if you can't buy parts, that's an issue. So.
Right. And we are, we did receive the insurance reimbursements for over four hundred thousand dollars for the break, the fire suppressant. So that is.
Rick, can that building not be winterized in the, you know, where it wouldn't need heating, that it could be drained and just, you know? But I guess in an old building like that, it's probably impossible to drain all the pipes.
Yeah, yeah.
Plumbing, you know.
Yeah, we do the bare, very, very bare minimum.
Um, Danny, I did ask that before and there was a technical reason why they couldn't do it. Like it was something like such of the volumes of water, but also the fact that it was sort of frankensbanded over time together that water would be trapped. But actually I have a question for you, Danny, because can you bring me up to speed? I didn't, I didn't. You just said that it will take two years.
That's what I would, that's what I thought everybody heard at the one meeting they were talking about, that it's going to take a minimum of two years to sell the building. Did anyone else not hear that? Or maybe I didn't make it up. I mean.
Was that, I know, I'm, I'm sure you didn't. Was that the meeting like last week or was it just a week ago?
No, it was prior. It was prior. As I said, it wasn't going to be an overnight, you know, that these things take time is what.
When Tracy came and spoke to us on the Zoom and then I think, did she come again to the actual meeting? But she basically said that if we like voted that week or during that cycle, that they could try to get it done by winter, like getting into winter, like this summer. But I didn't know if there was an update to that. Like they tried and they realized that that was too optimistic.
Yeah, I'm not sure Vanessa saw that. I don't know.
I'll, I'll, well, yeah. Ed, if you circle back with her about the contract, could you just also confirm her timing, her timeline again?
Sorry. That, that information is in the proposal, which is what I'm looking for right now. Pretty sure. I, I think that that timeline was in their proposal, Dennis. I'll let you know in a minute.
And I don't know if this is BS or sorry, BS or not, but when we were doing a tour of the high school and I pointed out the plaster falling off the ceiling, I inquired about roof leaks and I was told it's just, it's not the roof, it's humidity in the summer that goes up and like kind of just gets the plaster all foamy and then it starts to fall down. So I, the problem with that roof is that it's slate. So that's like, oh, the type of roof I would not endorse fixing on our budget. Yeah, I don't, I, I would, I would be curious to get, do we have a, did somebody assess the roof? Do we have an idea of what the current state of the roof is there?
I don't know. I mean, I, I I kind of thought, Ed, maybe I'm wrong. Ed might be able to help. I thought that roof was newer.
No, I don't think it is. I think it's been repaired a number of times. That, the, an assessment of the current or current as of a year and a half ago to the state of the roof should be in that a hundred and some page document that due diligence report that the CDC did for us for free. Everybody has that or or the link to it. I think it was too large to send and we just sent out a link to it. But that should address, it, it, it addressed everything else, all the other systems in the building. So it should address the roof system as well.
I'll check on it. Okay. I'll check on it tomorrow. All right, just so we can keep going here because we have a lot to get through. Ed, did you see the question from Vanessa? In the chat?
No, I did not. No, I didn't.
The new board members don't have that proposal.
No, I thought everybody had it because of the, oh, that's right, because of the that, the board retreat. That's right. That's when people got it. I'll find it somewhere and, and send it out.
Yeah, just to clarify, Ed, I think that that hundred pager predates at least Rob, Juanita and I. But we have, all we have is the seven page or whatever, the one that was sixty-eight thousand that we voted on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is, this is a big, this is an analysis of the condition of the building and recommendations on what what could be done with it. It's a big deal. So let me find that.
All right, staying on the projects, you know, there was talk about the possibility of borrowing money. Talking to bond counsel last week, just to kind of see where, when the market crashed on Thursday or Wednesday or Thursday of last week. Just kind of talking to them about where our refinancing is and, you know, it's still hanging out there because of the market conditions, but right now, the market is not good for refinancing, but it is good for new borrowing. So if the board wants to borrow before the market starts to change, now would be the time and we need to sit down and talk about that. But that kind of goes with that nine point one million dollar S or three funds that we built into the grant six million, I'll bet roughly six million to renovate Kelly. So we have to make that determination because again, that's the money that goes away in two thousand twenty-four. So we have to make decisions.
Rick, I'm sorry to do this, just to circle back to the high school. Proposal from, from the CDC states that they would wrap up, they would be reviewing, negotiating terms of proposals from developers by September of twenty-two. Wait, that can't be right. That's too close. And, and the cover letter states that the roof is in need of a complete replacement as well as the parapets around the building. But.
Okay.
And I think that we voted on that like three months later than what the proposal was. So she just added three months onto that. So September plus three.
Yeah.
Okay. So again, we just need to talk about, once we get some direction from the architects and Bill Cray on which way we're heading, then the board has to make a decision if they're going to borrow money or use the existing money. Just to jump ahead a little bit and then we can come back up there to finish up. But last week during the budget meeting and budget talks, we got on the finance overall and Vanessa asked me to kind of just show like some bullet points on the amount of money that we have in all the different little buckets of where that money's at. So they could just kind of see. So, and this kind of ties to, to the borrowing, if we're going to borrow or not. So right now we have two point one sitting in capital project fund. We have six million dollars currently budgeted through S or three in the E-grant system, not in any of our district budgets, but just in the preliminary federal program grants. And then fund balance, you know, we have a six point six million dollar fund balance as of June thirtieth of last year, projecting between eight and ten million dollar fund balance as the end of this June thirtieth. I know it's a little bit of a gap in there of two million dollars, but again, it's all depending on how much more S or funds we use to offset our normal operating expenses between the end of April and the end of June. So again, and then the board's decision on the amount of, you know, the fund balance they want to use. That's a board decision. We would have to do a resolution and the board would pass the resolution using, you know, two million, four million, eight million dollars of the fund balance. And how much of that S or three funds would we continue to use or borrow money? So those are some decisions that we need to make and I, I'm hearing from the beginning of the conversation, maybe the mic go ahead on Monday, by Monday.
Okay, yeah. When.
Just to clarify, sorry, sorry, just to clarify, C and D are not the same thing?
Correct. So, well, it's two different years.
So, so like if I want to see how much money I'll have next year, I add A, B and D.
A, B and D, correct.
Okay. That's, that's my question.
Yep. Well, when you say, when, when you say next year, what do you mean next year, Vanessa?
After six thirty, twenty, like the next school year.
Well, yeah, I, I understand. Yeah, but I'm just saying that's six million is the S or fund. So that's that's available now and it's available for the next two years.
So I can add A, B, C and D or just?
A, B and D.
Yeah, A, B and D.
Yes, well, between eight and ten of a fund balance, we'll have two sitting there in capital and then six million of S or three to spend.
Correct.
So, yeah, I mean, then this gets into the tax conversation too. And how that is generally structured. When we put that decision out to the board. Like the conversation, the numbers behind it of this is the impact and this is the risk.
Yeah, yeah. So you're talking about reducing taxes, Rob? Is that what you mean?
Just to get the facts out there for us all to see if we should consider it or not, because that's, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, I mean, again, we, you know, our fund balance, if, if, in a district that was going to raise taxes can only be eight percent of the revenue. So because we're not raising taxes, our fund balance can be basically anything above that eight percent if the board chooses to do that. I'm not recommending that, but I'm just saying it can be without any worries about the state saying you have to earmark it for certain things.
I also don't know if there's a way for us to understand the benefit, because last time we lowered taxes, I think there was a, a good benefit for people buying. People came to Wilkinsburg because all right, they're getting to be more reasonable with taxes. And if that would happen again. especially in today's housing market with people wanting to move here closer to the city, but still kind of a suburb feel in some pockets. But it's also like with annexation, I feel like we want Wilkinsburg to be in a position of strength as much as we can make it while still being financially viable. Because I think that conversation is probably still going on in the background next year. I haven't heard a thing honestly since it got delayed. But I think they're probably still talking about it, but if we can lower taxes and make Wilkinsburg even more attractive and come from a position of strength, I don't know, I don't see why we wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, you could do a combination of both. I mean, you know, of using the fund balance and also borrowing money and the capital project money. I, I just, again, maybe Dr. Joe will say something different when I say this, but nine million dollars is an awful lot of money to try to spend on education. For the next two years. I mean, that's why we earmark so much of it for capital projects.
Yeah.
You know, three million, I mean, don't forget, we still have seven hundred thousand we haven't touched either. So Doc, I don't know.
I know that's where the, you know, the board has to sit there and think that we have, we're going to have somewhere between ten and fourteen million that we can spend on a construction project or renovation project. But then, you know, thinking about, do we want to lower taxes and if you do lower it, how much do you lower it? And then do we borrow? So there's a lot of things hanging out there, but with those numbers, it looks like ten, fourteen million. If we didn't do anything and we kept the renovation in that range, we wouldn't have to borrow anything. But then you have, are we going to, thinking about lower taxes and then, or do we want to borrow? And do we want to add more to the renovation? I don't know. Right now, the renovation's what, fifteen million, I think?
That's total all in, yeah.
All in.
You know, the other option too is, and it's just to throw this out there, because there's no penalty in paying back the bonds early. We could borrow the money and then see how things shake out with everything else and then pay it back early if the board wishes to do so.
Sure. Do you generally borrow strategically, like a certain amount? You borrow half of the project, the full thing? What is like best practice?
You can, I mean, that, that, I mean, but with a project this size, it's not going to matter that much and, and the time limit on this project being within two years, it's not going to matter.
Okay.
That, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't make sense to buy, you know, using twelve million dollars, six million, six million, you know, a year apart.
I just think about like, all right, we have this big sum of money. What are the biggest things that we can impact in the community from a school perspective? It's getting a better facility in Kelly. It's probably making it more attractive for buyers. I mean, what else is within our control besides giving big raises to everybody and helping retention? Or investing in like out of school learning or investing in other things that are like deficiencies to the school, but that's also not going to eat up a million bucks.
Well, no, I mean, thinking about it, you know, based upon what Dr. Joe and I put into the E grants, we have three point seven million to offset all that stuff you just said, educationally, learning loss.
I think we're crazy not to do capital and taxes then, but we got to put the factor front of the board.
Yeah, the only thing that, you know, the outlier out there, there's a couple outliers. One, you know, the governor's budget, you know, what's it going to be? What isn't it going to be? Two, the word is out. There's a teacher shortage. We got a contract coming up next year. The word is out. So we know that's going to be a battle that we're going to have to, you know, undertake. You know, I don't know what they're going to be, you know, you, you add that with inflation. I'm sure it's not going to be an easy battle next year. I mean, we're going through the support staff negotiations right now. But the teachers, they know the situation. They know they're in the driver's seat with this major shortage we got going on. So that's concerning as well.
I agree. And what doesn't help us trying to attract people and keep people is the annexation talk. That hurts us.
That's fair. All right, so we've got five minutes. I don't want to run.
There, there's no harm in, 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 in starting the ball rolling on, on a bond issue.
Okay.
To, to get at least, at least a half, if, if half of the money, if twelve million can come from S R, then six to eight million of, I mean, bonds and borrowing would be enough, I think, especially since we can pay it back. There's too many balls in the air. Are we going to lower the mileage rate or are we not? Are we going to have a huge surplus or are we not? And, and, and then there were the perceptions of all that. If, if merger talks do proceed, are we better off being in even more debt than we are now? Or better off having money in the, in the, in reserves? Nobody knows any of this. Strategy.
What I could do is, as I could go and get a cost estimate on a bond issuance of like just say six million dollars and come back to the board, maybe by, maybe even by Tuesday of next week with a, an annual payment of what that would cost the district financially each year for the next twenty, twenty-five years.
Yeah, that'd be great. That was a good idea.
Yep. All right. Okay. So we're good with that. One of the other things too that I'll just kind of touch on real fast before I get into just a brief overview of the numbers. At the last week's meeting, also Vanessa asked if I could just kind of do a comparison of where we would be if we didn't have S R. So guys can see that. Just give me a second to.
What I was looking for here, Rob, was sort of like, what is the typical gap that we end up with? Because I noticed over time that the, the budgeting is very conservative. So when I ask myself the question about millages, I'm not like, I know that we budget from the general fund balance to kind of underwrite that bet. But really to me, what we're betting is like how big of this gap that we end up with every year. That is not even budgeted into it. Could we pull the mileage rate out of? Because I think two years or last year was like a couple million. This year, what is this? Two point seven million at the bottom?
Yeah, so what that two point seven is, is showing is that where we, if, if, if our fiscal year ended May tenth and we didn't have S R funds and S R funds did not exist, we would end this fiscal year with a two point seven million dollar surplus.
So to me, that means that we just have like these extra millions that we, we are so conservative with budgeting, budgeting about. Combined with the growth that happens on the revenue side.
Yeah, and just to show you a comparison of what that does then though is.
We would end it with a surplus, not a deficit, Rick?
Correct.
Okay.
Because.
Yeah, I thought we said a couple of weeks ago, I thought we saw that you mentioned that we might be two hundred thousand dollars. Unless I, it was something different.
No, that was like for next year. He was.
Okay.
He was conservatively budgeting and yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the budget for next year. We were, we're about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars apart.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, like Vanessa said, there's a lot of conservative numbers in there with salaries and things like, and you know, we added some teachers that, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. Just real fast to kind of show you what, what that looks like compared to. So right now, if, if we put S R back into the equation, you're looking at three point seven million instead of the two point seven. And then the total fund balance is ten point three. So that's the comparison that, you know, Vanessa was looking at last week. She's like, hey, I see what that says and that looks like with S R funds, this is what we're going to do. However, can you just show me what it's going to look like without the S R funds? And that's this one. So what I, what I basically backed out was the teacher salaries that we charged to S R off the expenditures side. And then I backed it out of the, I did not include it in the revenue, not that we even received it yet, but it's nowhere in the federal revenue side. You can see we're at one point four in federal revenue. We're going to. We're going to.
How about in the event we didn't have S R funds? In those actuals would have hit our normal actuals, like the operating budget.
That's right.
That's this?
That's this. Yes, that is this, Rob. So this is through May tenth. So basically what I said, what I'm showing the board here is.
Oh, that's why. Oh, yeah, I was expecting like a thirty, thirty-three.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. So again, I, I mean, I could, I could project this out without S R funds moving forward. But.
Oh, no, we're good.
Yeah, this just kind of.
Yeah, this was just, this was just for illustrative purposes. You can continue to budget.
Right. Well, I like it.
Yeah, I think, I think the purpose was to kind of do like a comparison, like, okay, here's where we're at year to date, right here. With, you know, S R and everything in it and here's where we're at projected. Because remember, the two point nine million that we're getting for S R that I said we, they released to us, doesn't come in until May twenty-third. So that's why you see it over in, in here in federal revenue, but it's not over here. So, so that's the difference. So the, the big, the good news is we're either going to end the year, you know, somewhere around ten million dollar surplus. That's why I'm saying between eight and ten million is where we're going to end this current year. So we're, our fund balance growth is another two million dollars by June thirtieth.
Quick question, Rick. Since the construction project is going to last a few years, do we need to even like spend time on looking at pricing out bonds if like we won't, we won't be spending like fifteen million dollars upfront? It'll be kind of elapsed over time. So would it be more meaningful for us to kind of, since we have so much money? Like go about this project for about a year and then kind of reevaluate whether we need bonds by year two?
That goes back to the market conditions. So right now, the market is best for us to borrow now. If it, we wait a year and it's not, we want to borrow, we may pay more.
But we don't know what the market.
Right, we don't. We don't.
I mean, like we, I, I, I'm with you on that, but I, technically that would be a really big decision with, based on something very uncertain.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, let's start that process. I know it's a good idea.
Just, you know, real quick, I mean, I'll just kind of go through. I mean, you guys, the numbers are here, the backups on this, on the documents, on, on the, on board docs. But I'll just kind of go through some of the highlights real quick. I just made some notes, you know, charter for the, for the expenditure side of things. Our charter school costs for this year are down three hundred and eighty-five thousand. And again, that's always in this five hundred area here.
Are you saying charter school costs are down for the end of year projections or down year to date?
Year to date, three hundred and eighty-five.
That's, that news would be too good.
Well, I mean, and it's been that way all year. They've been down. So I'm expecting the trend to continue and you can see that they are right in here, five sixty-two is the charge school expenditures. So they are down three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Special ed costs for this year is down one point one million. Transportation cost is up, but remember, I keep saying we didn't have transportation last year.
And the special ed, the special ed, Rick, sorry, but we, we pumped that up by almost two million dollars for this year's budget.
Doesn't have anything to do with budget. It's comparing what we spent last year to what we spent this year.
But when you say that we're down one point two, oh, that, I'm sorry, that's not the end of the year, never mind.
Well, we're down one point one million from what we spent last year. We spent a million dollars less so far this year in actual expenditures. So we're not under budget by a million. We spent a million less.
And last year at this time.
Yep, yep, and, yeah. Well, here, let me just see. So expenditures. Special ed. Right here.
Special ed salaries in there or no?
No, this is everything.
Separate, right? That's separate.
So right here, this point in time last year, we spent five point six million. This year we spent four point eight.
And we got Presley Ridge in there. What, what would be the reason for the one point one million difference?
Uh, less kids being outplaced.
Okay, yeah, and I want to.
And, and Presley Ridge. I mean, Presley Ridge is huge.
Yeah, we're paying, but we didn't pay that before, so that's an expense.
No, we paid that before. We sent the kids there.
Oh, we sent them there, but we didn't send, so this is the first time we had them in our building, so.
So it's a huge savings.
Yeah, it's a huge savings. I want to be careful though, the one point one, I just want to be careful. Sometimes I just want, and I know Ed brought this up a long time ago and it was a great point that Ed made was we have to be. When special ed, we just got to be careful. This year we brought some students back. That probably is not in the best learning situation for the students. So we got to be careful sometimes. And I like it when Ed said that about a year ago, hey, it's not just about spending money or saving money, but it's about what's best for our kids. So we also have to be careful sometimes that bringing kids back isn't what's best for the kids as well. So we got, you know, we have to think about that.
I agree, but I thought we brought Presley Ridge in because we got cited for having too many outplace kids.
No.
Oh, no, that was just because it was an innovative way to save money and to keep those kids in our own buildings.
Yeah, we had.
I don't recall any citation from the state about that.
Yeah, we did. We got cited.
But it wasn't for that, that wasn't the reason why Presley Ridge was brought in. The reason why Presley Ridge was brought in is because we were trying to work out a situation where we had about three or four kids disrupting the whole school building. They've been effective, but let me give you an example. We had one family come in. All once, five special ed kids coming from one family, probably two of those kids should not be in our building right now. We're not servicing those kids the way they needed to be serviced. So sometimes there has to be a good discussion, good, you know, meeting with the alternative schools ahead of time. Making sure we're just not bringing kids back to save money. Because we, we just, we may not have the personnel or the personnel or the expertise on some of these kids. The one family that was brought back, two out of five should probably not even be in our building. The first day they were, they're the one boys undressing himself in front of the whole class. And we have one-on-one aides. We, we don't have one-on-one aides and two of these kids need one-on-one aides. But that hasn't been provided for these kids. So what that does is it takes away not only for those kids, it takes away from the learning from the kids in the classroom. So we got to be careful about that.
Yeah, Joe, not to go too far down this lane, but how, how on earth did that happen? You know, where the kids were in the district and, and, and placed in classrooms before we even knew how severe their, their issues were?
Yeah.
Was that just a Darren, Darren, Darren drop?
Well, that's just been my concern with bringing kids back without discussions and just because we're saving money, let's get them back here.
Yeah, all right. I mean, with, with the special ed, you either pay now or you pay later.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and like I said, the kids, what we can give the kids, and don't get me wrong, some of the kids are doing pretty well. And the Presley Ridge program is doing a tremendous job of students not running through the buildings, not disrupting other classrooms. But as we get Presley Ridge, helping those three or four students, now we have, that was just one family of five special ed kids. And two that have needs that are way out of our realm that needs one-on-one aides. Or should be placed in a, in, in an alternative educational facility. But it is what it is now with the time of the year, we're, we're kind of in a, in a situation now, so.
All right. I want to make sure we have a break between. Get some food and relax for a second. But Rick, is there anything else pressing you want to share with us?
Nothing pressing. I mean, just, I was just going to say that, you know, the revenue side is up, you know, like not a total revenue, but like D transfers are up a hundred and one thousand. Earned income tax is up a hundred and thirty-three thousand from this point in time last year. So those two things are really showing some growth in, in the economy of Wilkinsburg. So that's, those are key indicators is the earned income tax, people are back to work because that was down based on unemployment. And D transfer is up again from previous years and that's on the housing market. The only thing down really is the taxes, real estate taxes, but that's because we lower taxes by three mils. Other than that, everything is in line. You saw, you know, you saw what we were looking at here without S R. So we're doing good and with S R, we're doing even better.
Okay. Can you send out a, thank you for all this. Can you send out a high level summary of the impact of one, two, three mils? Can you also do half a mil? Is that?
Sure.
Can you just do zero all the way to three and half increments?
Yeah, yeah. You mean, what, what that looks like as far as real estate reduction?
Yeah, and the impact on the operating budget.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Order revenue, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Hold on one second, real estate tax.
Three is probably aggressive, but I think I'll just put it in context.
Yeah, the, the key to that. Yeah. The, the key to that is, um, you know, how mu, so right, what, what, one of the things that, you know, I know, um, you couldn't get on, on, I think it was Monday night last week, Rob, but one of the things that we talked about is, and this year's coming budget, we don't have, I didn't budget a lot of the S R funds in there. There's only six hundred thousand, six hundred forty thousand dollars of S R funds budgeted for next year. So offset that tax reduction, you know, we could possibly look at using more of the S R funds. Which I think is still going to be another, out of S R two, still another half a million dollars. And we could even budget in S R threes, which there's no S R threes budgeted in the budget for next year. Or, you know, the other option is, um, you know, being less conservative on our expenditure size and getting down to the real nitty gritty and reducing some of those things in there. We are wish list type things.
Yeah.
But also realizing that we have a multiple year timeline for construction. I think we're looking at it like as though we have to cut a check for fourteen million tomorrow. Um, but realizing that we are going to have multiple years in the fourteen million at least over two. Or, or the S R part of that over two. Um, to me, we need to start thinking in a longer term time horizon and, and factor. And also when we, when we make it property tax cut, how that helps the borough grow. And as we've seen, can have a tendency of paying itself off. Like in the worst case scenario, it doesn't. But, you know, the, the numbers will stay the same. But in a better case scenario or in, in a more likely case scenario, we'll probably have a little bit more real estate transfers um, when we have a more friendly tax environment.
That is true. That is true. Okay. Yeah, I can, uh, I can send that out. You want me to send that out ahead of time, Rob?
As soon as you have it.
Yeah, I can send it out probably by the end of day tomorrow.
Okay, cool.
And all this information on board docs is, is out there public. So.
Well, thank you. Thanks everyone for the discussion. That was good.
Okay.
All right. See you in a little bit.
See you in a few. Thank you.